Well, it looks like the time has arrived to call a meeting to order as our students might be. Okay, then if you would all stand with me, we'll say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, and at this time I'll call our open session to order for November and ask for a single motion to approve our consent agenda, which is the approval of the minutes of October regular session, the approval of the financial summary fund balances, the authorization for payment of bills and the late bills, the approval of the substitute teacher pool.
I need to pull a name from that.
Okay. Okay, wait till we get, wait, we'll get to that in just a second, and the approval of the proposed agenda. Now, who are we taking?
Pam Tucker.
I did see her on there. Okay. Okay, the, in the payment of bills, the early bills is two hundred forty thousand, two hundred forty thousand, two hundred thirty dollars and eighty-one cents. The late incoming bills are two hundred fifty-five thousand, two hundred thirty dollars and sixty-five cents. We're going to deduct out thirty-five, three thousand five hundred forty-five dollars and fifteen cents, which is contracted bus for Larry Vincent because of Mr. Strong being related, and that will leave the total that will be in the single motion of four hundred ninety-one thousand nine hundred twenty-six dollars and thirty-one cents. Does anybody have anything else to pull? Is that, I didn't see anything else in the, in the bills. Okay, do we have a motion? Motion by Mr. Strong, segmented by Mr. Treadway, all in favor. Carried six oh. Now, we will approve the three thousand five hundred forty-five dollars and fifteen cents for Larry Vincent. Motion by Mrs. Aborn, segmented by Mr. Johnson, all in favor. Carried five oh with one abstention, Mr. Strong. Of the substitute teacher list, now we will approve Pam Tucker, if there is a motion, for Pam Tucker, made by Mr. Johnson, segmented by Mr. Treadway, all in favor. Carried five oh with one abstention, Mrs. Aborn. And then for Mrs. Ellison. Motion by Mrs. Aborn, segmented by Mr. Treadway, all in favor. Carried five oh with one abstention, Mr. Ellison. All right, next item on the agenda is recognition of ministers, which we're always happy to have people show up at our open sessions, and then is communications. MSBA monthly board report, Mr. Henry.
News and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at the state's revenue picture and how that might impact funding for our public schools, both this year and in the future. Former state budget director and current governmental relations consultant Jim Moody has conducted an analysis of state revenue, and he says a diminishing revenue base combined with sluggish or nonexistent revenue growth will likely mean less money available to fund public education and other needs in coming years. Moody told an audience at the recent MSBA annual conference, "One example of the diminishing revenue base is a provision in Senate Bill 19 passed in 2015 that effectively wiped out a large portion of Missouri's corporate income tax, thereby reducing state revenue by around $200 million."
And so I think revenue growth is going to be very limited or possibly nonexistent in the next ten or more years. And so, you know, I would go back to what I told you about starting to work on this with the School Boards Association in 1994. What happened in the nineties triggered a series of what I believe are serious tax mistakes, which have continued all the way through Senate Bill 19 in 2015, and we're just in a heck of a mess. We're seventy percent individual income, that's probably going to go up to seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five percent. We're going to be cutting our largest revenue source. Sales tax is growing very little, and the future just doesn't look good.
Moody also said state revenue will be affected by tax cuts likely to take effect later this fiscal year as a result of Senate Bill 509. He warned those attending his session at the annual conference, "There almost certainly will be some significant withholdings from the state budget during the current fiscal year." He estimated the withholdings at between $250 and $300 million, and some of that may come from state funding for public schools. Students throughout Missouri have more opportunities than ever to participate in career and technical education because of partnerships that have been developed between career and technical centers and higher education institutions around the state. There continues to be high demand for skilled workers in areas such as welding, mechanics, HVAC, and transportation. But business and industry leaders say they often struggle to fill those jobs. State Board of Education member Joe Driscoll says even more needs to be done to connect classroom academics with real-world skills.
We have employers that can't find enough skilled and educated kids and people to take the really good jobs that exist out there. And on the other hand, we have communities and neighborhoods all around the state and other places in the country where the only jobs that kids and others can find are low-wage service jobs. So we have this really big gap between, you know, kind of uplifting educational experience that allows kids to kind of get and keep good family and community-supported jobs, and then on the other end, the availability of jobs in a lot of places around the state just doesn't quite match up.
Driscoll made his comments during a panel discussion with members of the State Board of Education during the recent MSBA annual conference. MSBA Center for Education Safety held its tenth annual Safe Schools and Colleges Conference at the Lake of the Ozarks. Just prior to the annual conference, the event drew school resource officers, board members, administrators, law enforcement officials, and community leaders who have a role in keeping our schools as safe as possible. Author and retired U.S. Army Lieutenant Colonel Dave Grossman was a keynote speaker at the event, and he said there are a number of low-cost steps schools can take to keep school buildings safe, including random visits by local law enforcement officers. Grossman also said installing an anonymous tip line can be helpful.
We need to have something they can text message chips in. We need to be able to call in. A baseline requirement is a tip line. We're stopping incidents daily across America with tip lines. It needs to be well-advertised, they need to know where it is, they need to be able to call it in, they need to be able to text it in. And they need to be anonymous if they want to.
Neighborhood watch crime prevention programs have been around for many years, but now MSBA Center for Education Safety has developed a school-focused neighborhood watch program called Schools Watch. This program encourages parents, grandparents, and those living near school buildings to become another set of eyes watching for suspicious activity near schools. A free mobile app is available to allow neighbors to report such activity immediately to law enforcement officials. Contact MSBA Center for Education Safety for details on how you can form a Schools Watch program in your school district. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Christmas Open House, December thirteenth.
December thirteenth, I'll be in here all day, and we invite the board, as well as all faculty and staff, to come throughout the day as they have time. We'll have food in here, I'm just busy with teachers, and if time permits, we'd love to have you.
Where are you going to be?
Right here.
Starting at what time?
We're going to start, we have to start first hour, because some people only have first hour, so we'll start at eight-thirty. Mrs. Nash.
Ava Board Spotlight, the district, state, cross-country.
I'm going to talk about that. Joe Sicilia, he was the only member of the Ava Cross Country team to qualify for state. He's a junior here at Ava High School. At the district cross-country meet in Hollister, Joe finished twelfth. He ran the five-kilometer course in a time of seventeen minutes and forty-three seconds, which is a 5:42 average, which is pretty good. That put him twelfth. The top ten, fifteen members get to go to the state cross-country meet the next weekend in Hollister. Very difficult course, he ran a time of seventeen minutes and fifty-four seconds, which placed him sixth on the all-time fastest Ava cross-country runners top-ten list here at Ava. And he's a junior, and he's coming back, so he has a chance to go back and finish in the top fifteen there next year. He couldn't be here today, he's at the Ava area, or the Area Barn Warm Meat Dance. So we'd like to recognize him for accomplishments at cross-country this year.
This is Mrs. Chantel Emerson, and she approached us at the beginning of the year wanting to recognize students, not because of athletic ability or not necessarily because of GPA, but just something to recognize students for good behavior. So we came up with the Bear Ground Award, and this is for students who get positive write-ups. So if a teacher sees students doing something positive or community service activities or different things like that, they do a Bear Ground referral. And so a committee of teachers decides which student is recognized each month. And so Mrs. Emerson gives them a ball cap, a lanyard, and a Sonic gift card, and so we want to appreciate for what she does for our students, thank you.
Get under the bear, Chantel. Yeah. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is principal and director reports. Elementary Principal, Dr. Hall.
So I'll do mine, and I'll also do Mrs. Swatter's. This past Friday, we had our Veterans Assembly, and we also had our Veterans Breakfast. We always appreciate Mrs. Aborn partnering with us on that and all our veterans that came out, and we appreciate Mrs. Dean, we thought she put on a real good program for our veterans. Mrs. Swatter said that, you know, we're starting breakfast in the classroom on the twenty-eighth. She's had teacher meetings, and we're really excited for all the opportunities that breakfast in the classroom will provide for our students.
There was another celebration of veterans at the Veterans Day assembly, Mr. Hall. His staff recognized him, and they each gave him a pen as he walked out the door, so.
Hard to carry out.
You'll never run out of things, right? So it was very nice.
High school principal, Mrs. Nash.
Ava High School has partnered with the Ava Area Chamber of Commerce for the work readiness community, and so what we will do is take a sample of our students, our seniors, and give them assessment, which is developed by ACT to kind of show different employers what kind of a work-ready force that we have here at Ava, and hopefully entice new businesses to come to Ava. So we're kind of.
Maintenance Director, Mr. Valentine.
Everything's going pretty good in my department. A little later, I'll talk to you about some HVAC problems.
School nurses are with us, food service, Mrs. Aborn.
I really don't have anything to add, other than we're excited about breakfast in the classroom. Do you guys have any questions, anything? If you do, just go ahead and ask. I've talked to the teachers, the principals are helping me, Ann Leonard's been a great advocate for this, and we're trying to get the word out to the parents that this is available to every student, so, from pre-K to 12th grade.
Taking a couple of site visits.
Yes, we have.
Taking teachers on-site visits to see how.
And it probably will be an ongoing adjustment, you know, it's not something we're going to say, "Okay, this is the way we're going to do it from here, we will adjust." And I've tried to assure my teachers that we will, we will walk around it, we will do what's necessary to get it done. So I also, I don't know whether you accepted resignation from Triva Tate. Triva no longer can be with us because of her cancer has just gotten to where she cannot return back to work. We've been friends forever, and I've worked with her for the past fifteen years. Triva's a wonderful lady, and I really hate that. So keep her in your prayers.
Thank you. There is still Mrs. Premer isn't with us, and now we're ready for the executive administrative reports. Dr. Dial.
I'll touch on, Mr. Doan has implemented a work order system in our technology department. We think that's going well, teachers can, they have an online form that they fill out. They have an issue in their classroom, obviously it's an emergency, we contact him directly, but for just regular maintenance items, he's implemented that system, it seems to be going very well. We're actually tweaking it a little bit, where teachers get feedback when the issue's been resolved, so they know. So we're working through some issues, just learning how to use the system, but it's something that we created ourselves in Google Docs, so there's no, there's no cost to the district. But as soon as we get the bugs worked out in technology, Mr. Valentine wants to roll it into the maintenance department as well. So it just helps us keep track of what's happening, maintenance and repair items in the district. They talked briefly on our MSBA report about public school finance. A lot of the talk over the last month, you know, corporate income tax is way down this year. The school superintendents through Massa are asking Governor Nixon to, if we're going to have to make some withholdings, to make them before he leaves office. Governor Nixon's been a great supporter of public ed. Over his tenure in the governor's office, there is concern that when future Governor Greitens, I mean, he's going to have to make some decisions quickly in January when he hits the ground running, that the talk is that public ed will take the brunt of that, public and higher ed will take the brunt of the withholdings. Those withholdings, depends on who you talk to, it goes somewhere from two-hundred million to three-hundred million. I actually heard Mr. Moody say two-fifty to two-seventy-five at one meeting I was at with him. So we really don't know what it's going to be. We do know that we will see some withholdings at this point, we just don't know how significant it will be, so. I do have, I'd like to, this is just a rough draft. Mr. Henry and I have been working on, it's just an organizational chart, it's a rough draft of an organizational chart, just to define some duties in the district. Actually, it's to free Mr. Henry up to do curriculum instruction, professional development. So it's something he and I have worked on, I think he's excited about it. And it just gives people, that way they know who to go to if they have questions. Again, we're not, it's not finalized by any means, but we're working through it with administration, and we would like for you all to take a look at that as well, give us some feedback. You can email either Mr. Henry or myself, things that you see, and we'll define each of those roles a little more, they're just a quick snapshot, not a full job description, but we think that's important. Again, I've said it before, and I'll say it again, congratulations on the APR, Annual Performance Report, ninety-six point one percent. We are excited about that. Teachers do a wonderful job with our students, and our students perform. I was very pleased, Mrs. Nash, and I had this conversation the other day about our ACT composite score. It's, when you have every junior in the district taking the ACT and you're averaging over a twenty on the ACT with every junior taking it, that is outstanding work. So we're excited about that, and we congratulate specifically Ava High School on that work. Just a reminder that board filing opens December thirteenth and closes January seventeenth. It begins at eight AM in our office, in the administration office. I think everybody knows who the three positions that are open, but it's Mr. Spurlock, Mrs. Aborn, and Mr. Wallace for three-year terms, and traditionally, my understanding is that's been first-tempered serve, that's how they appear on the ballot. So just wanted to remind everybody about that, December thirteenth to January seventeenth. Mr. Henry?
Hi, Dr. Dial mentioned that the APR ninety-six point one, that's something that we're proud of. We break that out, and I talked about the new standards that the teachers are using, and that's something that we're looking at pretty close. Every year, we look at curriculum, curriculum's kind of a living, a living document. But rather than jumping into what curriculum we're looking at, we're going to focus on teachers looking at those standards and lining up what we're currently doing, and then making those adjustments. Several teachers are attending some professional development on that, on those new standards to make sure that the alignment's there. It's a stressful thing for teachers when you've been teaching something for several years and there's changes to that. So we're working on that very closely. To go along with that, our Professional Development Day, our spring one in February for the spring semester, that would be one of the focus, the focus areas is giving our teachers a chance for some vertical training and some alignment to those new standards.
Thanks, Sean.
Okay, next, under discussion action items, the 2016 MSBA policy updates, JG dash R, JFCG, and JFCF. Those were all in our packets, and they're for us to review for the next month, and hopefully next month we can approve those three policies. Anything to add to that?
Those go out to administrators as well, or if it's a nursing school policy, whoever they would impact in the school district, we ask them to look at them as well, provide us feedback if there's anything that they believe needs to be tweaked. People that are implementing the policy need to be involved in the policy, is the way we look at it. We want to give feedback to the Board of Education, but they have it currently, so we're currently, we'll wait, we'll wait, and we'll give you any revisions prior to next month's meeting, if there are any.
Next is middle school girls locker room HVAC unit, bid one and bid two.
We actually got a third bid today, but Mr. Valentine, if you want to come up and speak to that just a little bit.
Seven units in that building, in that area, all over twenty years old. Whenever it's got parts, it's no longer available, so we're going to have to replace the unit. Really hard to replace with the exact units that's there. I think it come in at like eighteen thousand, something down around five or six thousand. I made my recommendation which one that I think we ought to go with, but we also ought to think about that all the rest of them are of the same age, and if them parts go out, they're no longer available.
So after looking at all three different bids, and we got different types of bids, we replaced exactly what's there. Just hanging a furnace in the locker room, or putting a new rooftop unit on. Our recommendation, Mr. Valentine, Mr. Henry and I, is to go with Wooden's Air and Electric LLC, their number three option, which is to install a three-ton thirteen sear, eighty-five thousand BTU, ninety-five percent efficient furnace, for five thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Any questions?
It is a rooftop unit.
It is a rooftop.
Yeah, the units that were in the two to three thousand dollar mark, they were just hanging below. This one will give us, I will hesitate to say this, but this one will give us the option. It does have an air conditioner inside of it, we don't know that we have the power for that at this point, but if we want to air-condition that gym in the future, this will give us the option of being able to do that without any additional expense.
I know we've had a lot of trouble with the units that were installed a couple of years ago.
We about, we think we about have that finalized. We're waiting on some new thermostats, but Mr. Valentine, Mr. Henry and I met with Chris Ball, our architect, and we seem to be getting some traction, some.
The email I got today, the new thermostat is supposed to fix our problem. They're supposed to start making them be single floor.
Yes.
And we're supposed to get the first ones off the ceiling line, and you should do that.
Yes.
And they're not yet made, they're supposed to be made in the December. It was the last email we got.
Is the new thermostat, is this something that the contractor that put them on originally?
Is providing.
Is providing?
It's free of charge, it's no cost us.
Okay, they want to fix it, but we do.
Yeah, because we're still holding some money. We never paid the bill.
Is it the same contractor?
Yes.
The same company here?
No, different contractor on this, yes. This is a, this is a company out of, this is a local company out of Los Alamos.
All right. We need a motion then to approve unless there's any other questions. Motion by Mrs. Aborn, second. By Mr. Strong, all in favor. Carried six oh. Next is at-risk slash alternative school program review.
Okay, we did a program review on the alternative school and the at-risk program, and we ended up with a four-point-six-one on a scale of one point one to five, which we thought was very good. We had five staff members, one board member, four parents, and seven students who had input on this evaluation process. So when we look at our data, 2016, 2017, again, we're just starting the school year, so we don't have next semester's data on here, and there'll probably be more added on to this semester. So those numbers look kind of low, but just keep in mind that we're not even finished with the first semester yet. So our numbers for 2016, 2017 are going to be comparable to our numbers in 2015, 2016. Alternative school, right now we have ten students in alternative school, fifteen students in our co-op program. Summer school, that won't come out until next year, but our summer school program is, it stays basically pretty much the same. From 2014, 15, we had twelve students, and then again in 2015, 16, we have twelve, and then we'll see what we have next year, but usually it ranges anywhere from around twelve students in that program. Completion of credit, we've had eight students in here so far this year. Total alternative students ready to graduate, we have ten that are on track to graduate this year. Nine that are graduating with the same class that they started with their kindergarten cohort, so the same with their peers that they started with in kindergarten. So strengths of our program, the completion of credit program. Our completion of credit program is a program where students who have failed a class in a semester and have a percentage of fifty to fifty-nine percent, depending on what their percentage was, is how many hours they have to make up in order to regain that credit. So that's something that helps those at-risk students. Our ability to increase graduation rates and decrease dropout rates, the summer school program. The on-campus location allows blended schedules, and when we talk about blended schedules, some students are out there for specific courses for alternative school. If there's a course that they really like or something that keeps them in school, like the VOGA program or something like that, then we pull them out so that they can go to those classes. Flexible scheduling, the students can take any course at any time of the day. One-on-one teacher assistance when needed, and then we also started last year with our web-based program. So if we have a student that cannot come to school for some reason, another to alternative school program, they can still progress in their classes at home. So some of the concerns were lack of social interaction compared to traditional classes, and they are in one small room. Lack of physical activity for all-day students. Recommendations was involving younger high school students before they fall too far behind to recover. And maybe suggest alternative school when students are at the end of their sophomore year, if they're about a year behind, start identifying those students a little bit sooner. Our alternative school program is a safety net for our students who are at risk or. or not graduating with their class, and so that's something that we use to address the social, emotional needs for students. So glad to have that program. Any questions?
Do we have a motion to approve the At-Risk and Alternative School Program Review? Motion by Mr. Johnson, signed by Mr. Treadway, all in favor, carried 6-0. Next item is the Student Advisory Board, Student Advisory Board Position.
So we have started collecting essays for students that would like to serve on, as student advisor for the Ava R1 Board of Education. Tomorrow is the deadline, we currently have three applications on file, and I'm expecting more tomorrow, so I'm excited to see how many we end up with. After that, then we'll form a committee and narrow it down to two or three that we will present to the Ava High School student body to vote on our student representative. I do need a board member to serve on that committee. Volunteers.
When?
We'll probably wait until we come back from Thanksgiving break, that week that we come back.
I'd like to, I'd like to serve on. Somebody else wants to?
I'm on vacation.
You're going on vaca, you're retired, you can't go on vacation. Okay. All right, one of us will.
Okay.
I'll let you know, Mrs. Nash.
Thank you, Mrs. Nash. Okay, next is the Belcher Scholarship Award.
Did you receive those last month? We just need a, do we do them by letter or no?
Letter.
Letter, just need a letter.
Okay. We probably should talk about it, do you want to talk about it? You want to start?
Okay, my first choice was letter B. I only saw one Miss Belling in her, hers or his essay. I felt like the strengths were that they were serious about academics, but knows that grades are not that, not all important, that there are other things that are important in life too, besides grades. This person plans to be a doctor and has done a lot of volunteer work. Do you want my second choice?
Yeah.
My second choice was F. I thought the weaknesses were that whoever this person was did not mention any volunteer activities, and the focus in the essay was on golf accomplishments. Strengths, I put that he knows his strength, that it is math and golf, and he plans to go to college, knows that he'll be receiving a scholarship from this college already, and his essay was well-written.
Do you have a third one?
No.
Okay, then let's take two from each of us. Bart?
My first choice is A. I felt they, first of all, I thought all the applicants were very good, and this is not an easy, easy job to pick, to pick one or pick two, because they're all very good kids, and have worked hard in their schooling. First choice is A, and the second choice, let me scroll down here to it, is D.
Well, I chose the same as Marsha, I guess, B and F for the first two.
For one and two the same way?
Yeah, and pretty much the same reasons, so I think she might have copied from my paper.
We'll have to separate you two in class. Mr. Strong?
My first choice was B, my second choice was E.
Mr. Johnson?
First choice was B, and my second choice was A.
Well, my first choice was B, and my second choice was D. So it looks like B has five out of the six of us, so I think B will be the one. We don't know who that is, and.
The envelope, please.
Oh, well, I guess we have it, everybody does. That's A, that'll be Alana Brown. Alana Brown, so that will be our, the recipient of the Belcher, the district Belcher Scholarship winner receives, is it 50?
Yeah. I might get it wrong if I.
Oh, well, receives something from our district, which a lot of districts do not give a monetary anything, but that name then goes on to our region, Region 15, where Miss Brown will be competing against all the other districts within our region. And then from there, the person that's selected from the region will go on to the state level for a larger scholarship. Ours is 250, so evidently the region, I hate to say it, I think the region's five, but I.
500, I think.
500, and then it goes up from there. But anyway, I was telling everyone in the other room earlier, when you go to one of the events that MSBA puts on, and you get to hear a speech from the recipient, the statewide, then you sit there and look at each other and say, that's why that person was selected, because usually they have no script, and they're standing up talking to a couple thousand people, and they never miss a beat. It's, you know, just like it all comes natural, but they are, they're all great, great students, but, you know, as they say, the cream rises to the top, and that's kind of the way, when you pick the scholarship, it's usually that one that gets that overall, is one that, that every region has already, already looked at. Well, we're at the end of our agenda, but I have to, I usually throw something into the wringer every once in a while, and I'm going to tonight. Monday, I believe it was, I opened up my computer to find something very interesting, an organization that put out the 50 best high schools in Missouri. And so I quickly scrolled down to C, and, you know, a lot of, a lot of cities, we have 524, isn't it, districts in the state?
527.
527, but some districts, like Springfield, have several high schools, and so each one of those high schools could be one of the 50 top high schools in the state. So I don't know how many they were looking at, I even saw some, it looked like to me, some private schools on the list. So we're talking about a lot.
It's between 1,500 and 2,000.
Yeah, between 1,500 and 2,000 schools. And I scrolled down the list, and number 26 happens to be Ava R1 High School. So with that, I wanted to, I knew that wasn't on the agenda, but I wanted to make that announcement to the board that our school is number 26 out of the top 50 high school, best high schools in the state of Missouri. And with that, Mrs. Nash, I would like you to send back a message to our faculty and staff in the high school and thank them, because it comes first from the teachers with the students, of course, but our faculty are very important to us, so could you relay that message? Because it was, it was, you know, occasionally we get awards, and Mrs. Nash, Dr. Dial, Mr. Henry, somebody will call me or send it to me, and they didn't do, nobody had seen this yet, and it came to me, and I was like, wow! And then I saw Teresa had grabbed on to that right afterwards, and I didn't even tag you in it, Mrs. Nash, but anyway, it was, it was quite interesting to open up my computer Monday morning and see that. I was very, very excited. Ava placed in the top 50, number 26, that's, that's just pretty good. All right, we're at the end of the agenda. Our next regular board meeting will be December 15th at 6:00 PM in this, 6:30 PM in this boardroom. Do we have a motion to adjourn, go back into executive post-session? Motion by Mr. Strong, signed by Mr. Johnson, all in favor, carried 6-0. Thank you all for attending our open session tonight.